2019, please to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of America's citizens, to the honor of which it stands, one nation, united in the world. With liberty and justice for all. Will the first, please, vote for the roll.
John.
Here.
Kariga?
Here.
Halloran?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Moranti?
Here.
Misan?
Here.
Rosenthal?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Lola?
Here.
Presentee Pedro?
Here.
Form present.
To begin on a positive note, I'd like to read a recent proclamation signed by the mayor. Whereas the city of Hudson is proud to join family and friends in celebrating the 100th birthday of Judith L. Brooks, and whereas Judith L. Brooks was born February 8, 1919, she has been a longtime resident of the city of Hudson, devoting much of her life, volunteering her time to help those in need, and whereas we are honored to express our appreciation to Judith L. Brooks, who has demonstrated immense civic duty and pride in the city of Hudson. Now therefore, this was written by the mayor, as the mayor hereby proclaims and conveys to Judith L. Brooks our congratulations and best wishes on her 100th birthday. A motion to dispense with the reading of minutes of the January 7th and January 15th meetings and place them on file. Can I have a motion? Eileen, and a second? Sure shot? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. A motion to dispense with the reading of the city treasurer's report as of January 31st and place it on file. Can I have a motion? Sure shot, and a second, Calvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Committee reports, or copies are on your desks. May I have a motion and a second, place committee reports on file. A motion? DeWan, and a second? Rob? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Among our communications are the city clerk, financial report for 2018, Timothy O'Connor's public comments on the CAC's 2019 draft natural resource inventory, and from Camp Hill Hudson, offering their assistance to be part of the solution of the safety concerns at Third and Warren Street. May I have a motion and a second to receive the communications and place them on file. A motion? Rob, a second? Sure shot? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You have a list of bills on your desk. Any questions? Tiffany?
Just about the amounts that were charged, the status of it.
Oh, yes. This is an amount that has to be put in an escrow account with Amtrak. In Rob's estimation, though, it will only cost about $50,000, so we'll be reimbursed for upwards of two-thirds of this amount. But this is what Amtrak requires in an escrow account.
Is there any talk about when they work with Star?
Yeah, 2/20, 2020.
Thank you.
Anything else on here? Can I have a motion? Kamal, and a second? Sure shot? And a roll call vote, please. Oh, sorry.
95.
It's one of our telephone numbers, yeah. Roll call vote, please.
Alvin, Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
First resolution is appointing Hillary Hillman to the Conservation Advisory Committee. Can I have a conversation about this? Yes, Rich, thank you. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
A slightly revised resolution authorizing the posting of a "For Sale" sign on vacant parts on Spring Street. If you're at the Finance Committee tonight, you've learned that it's revised because there was the wrong city map number, and in answer to why I put a sign there, it's because of the nature of the buildings on either side are for sale, and there's a building, I mean, the whole neighborhood is practically for sale. So the idea is that anybody, and certainly the people who might buy the properties next to it, will now know that this is also in play. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution is about entering into a cooperative investment agreement. Also, at tonight's finance meeting, you would learn that this is a group investment that would actually bring a slightly higher return on our MFR funds. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
Sixth Lucille Avenue. Before we vote, in answer to a couple of questions, there will be a contract that covers some of the questions that have been asked, such as the timeframe for them demolishing the property. What else, Andy?
They'll have the ability to get title insurance to confirm that the city took the property correctly, and the city can convey the title to their...
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
So, we, sorry, you said that, so, in the contract, there'll be, you know, that the time to demolish, that it can't be vacant, that'll all be within the contract, which will come before us at some later time.
And in addition, the successful, well, no, that'll be, I mean, you're authorizing us to proceed, enter into the contract and sell the property, so those provisions will be in the contract. In addition, obviously, there's a code issue with property, so anyone taking it, notwithstanding that, is still going to be obligated to rectify the building code violations that exist. We will have it in the contract, notwithstanding that.
Yeah, I mean, the people on the block are just looking for the buildings to be demolished, and to make sure that there's, that that tick isn't there.
Andy, who's going to determine the timetable?
What's that?
Who's going to determine the timetable? Because, it's a way that was nice two weeks ago, it was gone, so who's going to determine?
Sure. What I was going to do was just conferred with Craig Agan, make sure that we provide reasonable time for them to do that, and most importantly, to put them on formal notice that they have an obligation to take title. Those discussions have been had, and we just want to make sure that they're right.
Okay.
You said, if what happens, if they don't?
Then they would be subject to, you know, prosecution by the city. Ultimately, the city could, you know, go ahead and take it down and put it on a tax bill, and build it, so.
Thank you.
Due to the nature of the building needing to come down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution author is to eliminate outstanding taxes on city-owned property. I think this was explained at the informal, if you have any more questions from the council? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
Next is authorizing a transfer of funds within youth department accounts for fiscal year 2018. Any questions? A roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next is correcting and authorizing for 2019 by Department of Petty Cash Funds. Which was explained at the Finance Committee meeting, and approved. Any questions?
And about which, uh, draws, the, the, the lady keeps and sends?
Yeah. A roll call vote?
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
And others who joined us lately, late, John, your sale has been approved, this one didn't know? Oh, right. That's John Hardy, who's buying Lucille Drive.
How'd you go?
Probably going to build a single-family home, so.
Thank you.
Next resolution is accepting a youth department donation from Tom Roche in the amount of $400. Roll call vote, please, unless there's conversation.
Tell him, Tom, thank you. Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution is also revised, authorizing the city treasurer to encumber funds from the 2018 budget to the appropriate account in the 2019 budget. So this is basically revised, but we need a new introduction and second, because it's revised, but a new introduction. John, second. Tiffany, a roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
And the next resolution authorizes the city treasurer to transfer funds within the parking violations bureau account. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
I'm sorry, I'm not, maybe I'm not saying it correctly. Resolution that was revised, it has the number 10 on it. It looks like, I don't see, uh, the commonized part, random, I don't see that on here.
It's probably this one.
It's revised because Rob Perry included it on the DPW transfer resolution that's coming later in the year.
Okay, thank you.
Next resolution is a transfer of funds within the fire department accounts. I would need an introduction and a second. An introduction? Calvin, second. Tiffany, any questions? A roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a letter of understanding, excuse me, with Hudson Valley Greenway for development of a trailhead. This is to develop a trailhead at the city-owned property on Mill Street and Second Street, the same property where the proposal for Dog Park is, but this just authorizes the state to design their part of that project, and it's fully described in the attachment.
So this is two in one, basically, right?
What do you mean?
So we're voting for the mayor to move forward with the development of the park and for the state to do it, or just like?
Correct.
Two things, or, you know, it's like twisted, not all?
Yeah, we didn't get a lot of choice in this. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? John, second? Come on? Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution calls upon Governor Quano and the state legislature, late legislature, to continue aid incentives to municipalities called AIM, payments from fiscal year 2019 to 2020 state budget. This was brought to my attention by supervisor committees, because they are encouraging all the local towns and villages to make this plea to the governor, who is cutting back on money that normally comes to the city. It was, kind of figured, we did have a figure about what we would lose if this goes through, but I don't have it handy. Do you remember that by any chance?
Yes.
Handing?
Yes.
We asked Heather to comment and...
Yeah, the city receives essentially 1.4 million AIM funds each year.
So this is asking the governor not to cut that in the future. Any questions? I need an introduction, please. Rob, a second? DeWan, a roll call vote, please.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution is just amends the membership of the Youth Education, Seniors and Recreation Committee. The idea here is members of the host, for those who are unfamiliar, host is the Hudson Out of School Time Group that meets regularly. It's pretty much every group that provides any contact with youth throughout our community. And the four members being recommended to the youth committee will not be voting because they weren't elected, but this is just an amendment acknowledging that they're going to supplement the youth committee. Yes?
Oh, okay. So the, 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 there won't, there will be no more youth committee, is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, 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 the youth committee exists, this is just four people who will now be on it. Four more people.
So, I want, my question is, because I do stuff with Franciscus, sometimes I don't remember, do we have to do the same thing when we had Mark join us?
No.
For the housing, so why is this necessary?
It's not necessary. But, Nick, they were just like this formal acknowledgement. You could do that, actually, for your committee if you'd like, we could do the same thing.
Yeah, I just didn't want anyone to be confused, because we can always invite the public to our committee meetings as non-voting members, you know, I don't know why it's not official, but, yes, thank you.
Can I have an introduction? Rich, and a second, Kamal, a roll call vote, please. By the way, this was discussed with the youth committee first, so.
Alvin Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution, which is also approved by the youth committee, authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Columbia County for meals at the senior center. Any questions? An introduction?
Is it for the year?
I believe so, yes. It's in the attach. Yes.
Thank you.
Eileen?
At the Hudson City Center, or is that just the, the top says Hudson Senior? I think maybe they meant Hudson Senior on the bottom.
Oops, yes. Oh, no.
Hudson City Center.
That's not called, that's a, that's an area library.
That's the bank and...
Hudson Senior Center, right, start.
Yeah. I'll be looking forward to watch.
Can I have an introduction? Rob, second. Tiffany, roll call vote, please.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kariga?
Aye.
Halloran?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Misan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Lola?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Present.
Here.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a MOU, or memo of understand, memorandum of understanding that the Friends of Oakdale Lake. This too has gone through two committees, both through the DPW committee, where we learned that somehow DPW did not take responsibility for Oakdale Lake. of Oakdale Lake. In any case, this allows the Friends of Oakdale Lake to proceed with what they've been working on since they started their initiative back in, when did, sorry?
Last summer.
Last summer, yeah. I was hoping to be more specific, last summer.
June.
June.
July.
As you know, a lot of us have anticipated, they've provided numerous engagements with the community, there's been a lot of input, they've identified eight potential projects, and now this is going to allow them to start working on seeking funds for their projects. Can I have an introduction? Tiffany, a second. John, any other questions or comments? A roll call vote please.
Alvin Guo Yan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presenti Pietro.
I'm staying.
Harry.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for feasibility study to determine the costs associated with making the city hall ADA compliant. As you know, an RFP went out, the successful bidder is identified in this resolution. I wrote to you all, you know, we thought this was redundant given our pursuit of JLE. Heather, I think rightly pointed out that even if this does not happen, it will enhance any possible sale of this building should it go forth. It's all up in the air. But this has been budgeted for, it's just, so this is not coming out with any general fund or anything like that. Can I have an introduction, questions?
Yeah, some questions. What? So this is just to go over the study to see what ADA could, for this building, yes, for this building. And I know what it's looking for, but like ADA compliant can be like shares of things, it's not just like a, like a ramp in front, but also people have access to bathrooms or.
Downstairs.
And upstairs. But also if people, you know, hard of hearing or things like that, that also includes all of that as well, right? So that study will tell us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think the, yeah. Right, I just think, you know, in terms of hearing, that would be probably a much simpler installing, you know, the proper, you know, like, I don't know, same thing in church, you know, where you have those little boxes on the, on the aisle.
But the main thing is you do video phones to make.
Right, there's okay, why are you laughing, Mr. Rosenthal?
So, discouraging.
But the scope of the, the scope of the study is to talk about all.
Yes, I believe, I, you know, yeah. Can I have an introduction? Tiffany, a second. Duan, roll call vote please.
Alvin Guo Yan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presenti Pietro.
I'm staying.
Harry.
And the last resolution is one of the DPW superintendent's regular juggling of funds. It's all intra-departmental. Any questions? Can I have an introduction? Irene, a second. Rob, roll call vote please.
Alvin Guo Yan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presenti Pietro.
I'm staying.
Harry.
Now, before we go to new business, or old business even, I'd like to introduce, you may have two documents on your desk. Dave Barnett from GARR Associates is going to update us on the, the value rating. Go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mike. Dave Barnett, I'm the vice president of GARR Associates. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the reassessment project as we're closing on the final, final phase of the project itself. Couple of key statutory dates, just to be aware of. March 1st is the tax of status, a development here because we will be mailing out to property owners, I included a sample. I should mention, there's a couple of samples here, but it'll be mailed to every property owner. But what I did was include a sample of a cover letter and a disclosure notice. That really, once those notices go out, March 1st, we start our final phase. It's been about, it was delayed, so it's about a two and a half to three-year process from the onset of the project to now. But ultimately, what this phase is, is the informal review challenging phase. An important date is May 1st. This happens every year, it's no different because you do have a reassessment project, but May 1st is when your tentative roll is filed, and July 1st is when the final roll is filed, assessment roll. So, March 1st, mailing will go out. We will have resources available to property owners to look at assessments, look at sales that we utilize. GARR Associates will make themselves available for what we call an informal review. You'll be able to challenge your assessment in an informal review setting. We anticipate two, two, I would say probably a month of informal reviews. We ask people to call the 866 number that will be provided on the mailing that goes out to set the appointment. That call center will be available to property owners to navigate. If you're an internet user, it'll be listed on the cover letter what that website is to look at sales, look at assessments. Non-internet users will have that same information available in paper form. I think we'll probably put them in the library. But you'll be able to challenge your assessment, that's the potential first step. I'll stress this, don't panic. These values are preliminary, so there are, there is an opportunity, there's a couple, actually a few opportunities. This isn't a science, it's not perfect, so you will, as a property owner, be able to look at information, challenge your assessment in informally. You will get, if you do come to an informal review, by May 1st, a tentative roll, you will receive a notification if you came to an informal as to what that decision is, that decision that's rendered. The tentative roll is filed May 1st, as you have every year as a property owner, you'll be able to go to grievance day, which is the potential second step. That's with the Board of Assessment Review. I refer to them as an independent panel, they're all city residents, but they're not representatives from GARR, they're not even a representative from the assessor's office, that's the potential second step. And the third step is additional litigation after the Board of Assessment Review. Ultimately, the assessment roll will be final July 1st, and that really sets the, I guess, the tax rates and, and the first time you will see the, the new value or the 2019 value in your tax bill will be when the school bills come out in the back half of 2019, and as well subsequently with your city and county in 2020. I recommend to the council, don't try to answer questions, please refer all questions and concerns to GARR Associates. You know, these values are preliminary, I'll stress that again. We do have an opportunity to make adjustments, we're warranted, we ask property owners to at least look at the information. If you do see, or disagree with your value, or there are assessments or sales that you think are a better indication of the market, you know, that, that's something that you tend to present at an informal review, a recent appraisal, interior photos. Don't come, you know, to an informal review with a blank piece of paper and say your taxes are too high. The function and really the goal of a reassessment project, and, and our responsibility certainly for the assessment office, but for GARR Associates, is to get your value correct. And not naive, and I know the assessor's not naive enough to think, well, we're going to have to dig into your pocket. I understand that the value is a vehicle to determine your tax liability. What we have done is, and this is actually a statutory document, a legal document, can't really customize or change it, but what the disclosure notice that will be mailed with the cover letter shows is your old assessment, your new assessment, and a hypothetical tax illustration. It's hypothetical because budgets are now set, you know, for the, for the various taxing entities, jurisdictions. Also too, remember, the total pie is still a moving target. You know, as soon as they're mailed, someone comes for an informal, there'll be reductions from informal, there'll be reductions through the grievance day. So, the, the bottom half, while we're required by law to include it, can be misleading, but we do have to include it, and the, and the intention of it is to show what may or may not happen to your taxes in a set period of time. If this was your assessment, the budgets were, stayed the same, the levies stayed the same, this new value, preliminary value is determined, this is what may or may not happen to your taxes. It's important also to recognize that the total pie, you know, I mentioned before, we're not talking about taxes, but if the total pie increases and the budgets stay the same, then that projected or hypothetical tax rate ultimately should go down. GARR Associates does not have a crystal ball, the assessor does not have a crystal ball, we don't know what that tax rate will drop to. We do project it for the disclosure notice purposes, and we will display that on the website and in paper form, so that property owners can understand how much the roll went up, this is what your tax rate, there is a relationship there, but ultimately, we don't determine budgets, so we don't know for sure. What we do want property owners to focus on is the value that was established. If you disagree with that value, I'll stress to you that there, there is information, there are resources available to you, and you will have an opportunity, be it three times, but with us and GARR Associates, you will have the ability to challenge your assessment at an informal review, and then subsequently at Board of Assessment Review, grievance day, it's a fourth Tuesday in May, and then ultimately, there's additional litigation, if you choose to go that far. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. As I mentioned, May, March 1st, the notices will go out, so property owners are going to mail, property owners can expect that, that notice and the cover letter shortly thereafter on March 1st.
Members of the councils, do you have questions from Stephen? Thank you.
Thank you. Well.
So, this is just a, an assessment, this is not set in stone of what these numbers would actually take correct?
Yeah, the, the disclosure notice will take that new preliminary value, take all the old budgets and levies into the total pie, the total taxable value preliminary pie. So, the intention of the, of the tax, hypothetical tax illustration is to show, this is your new value, this may or may not be your increase or decrease in your, in your tax liability. But it's a projection, it's hypothetical, because we don't know exactly what the budgets are going to be, and we also don't know what the total taxable value will end up being.
These two forms are just the cover letters going out?
The cover letter and the disclosure notice will be going out March 1st. And the website will be live. I mentioned the toll free 866 number that will be available for property owners to call should you want information or schedule an informal review, lead some direction as to where to go to find some of the resources that are available.
That we will, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, new council area. Sure.
Recently, what the resolution has been assisting the local?
It was a, 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 that was in March, or April, or last year.
Yeah, there was a local law that just can form the exemptions to state law.
That's correct.
They will.
They will.
And then their exemption will apply to whatever that happens.
Thank you.
Kamal?
Is there an update on the employee buyouts for youth department for insurance, the agency?
For 2019?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good now. That was, that was last, I got already. Yeah. Seven thousand dollars. Council first, anybody else from the council? Linda?
I just have a few things. March 9th at Hudson Area Library, I'm hosting Jenny Roma, who's coming to talk about the governor's new ban on plastic bags. We hope you'll appear, she's a legislative advisor to many communities, the mayor or the governor has made this a potential law. So when you go into your convenience store and you want a little bag to carry out, we're trying to get those out of circulation. They are, animals are eating them, they jam up machinery, they create a kind of constant nightmare for our community, and we're trying, it's one step to address the environmental issues. So it's at 1:00, the library's hosted, so I hope, just going to put that out there on your minds to say that it's coming and how we're going to handle it. I want to.
Is there any flowers for them?
Yes, I have some, I'll get them out. I was at a meeting tonight at the Health and Human Resources of the county, and I was told that there's been a delay on getting a site for mental health at Bliss Towers because they can't get a certificate of occupancy from the housing authorities, so second warrant, we need your help, maybe Delgado could speed that along, because they want to get that site there to help people in the building get mental services. So that was another wrinkle, they're waiting to go in and can't get in because of that. I want to thank Tom, DPW.
Did they, sorry, did they have to do anything with the delay of their new coming project?
No, I think this is just, they need a certificate of occupancy to go into that building for the county to provide that service. And for some reason, housing authority is not producing it. So maybe the congressman can help push that along with Tom.
Did, you know why they're not?
It's just some wrinkle in the, in the machinery that getting things done. Wanted a fourth ward wants to thank Tom for making this RFP happen for John L. Edwards, that's a long time coming. I know the council's cooperating with the mayor and his desire, I'm hoping the mayor cooperates with, with the potential of John L. Edwards as a study, and hopefully can make that happen. Fourth ward is eager to hear how Colorado and we would like to get the gravel trucks out of our neighborhood as soon as possible. Just want to make sure that that doesn't fall to the wayside as we discuss stewards and all the other things that are approaching our community, but gravel trucks are never-ending. Thanks.
I'd like to also announce, this Saturday, there will be the public plunge at 11 or 10.
11 registrations, 12 is.
12 is the point. And extra added attraction, I would be plundered now.
He a master of music.
Yes, someone who contributed to our group actually wrote, make sure it gets out alive. Anyway, any other comments from the public? Okay, a motion to your attorney? Oh, Tiffany, sorry.
When's the great life coming?
That was, we scheduled that, March 11th. Motion to adjourn, second. Did you do it, oh, did everyone say hi?
Hi.